All right, let's start her up. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, we have minutes to approve from February 13th, March 13th, March 20th, March 27th, and April 3rd, but I believe that people want more time to look them over.
Yeah.
So we'll push that off to next week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We need to reschedule our Monday night meeting because it is Patriots' Day next Monday, so it will be pushed to Tuesday, April 18th, if everyone...
Yeah, I mean, we all ran the marathon, so we're kind of bagged that Monday night.
Okay, and did we have things scheduled for Monday?
Just CMRPC who flagged it. Do you want us to come on Monday or do you want...
And they said they could come on Tuesday.
And what about, says Matt's adventure park update?
Yeah, we should probably have one by then.
Well, that would, I just tell the Senate to move that to the...
18th?
Yep.
And then Conservation Commission?
They're piggybacking on that same visit. That's why they have the same time.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move all that.
And we gave Special Town Council that as a deadline to continue the personnel...
The Corey Policy Update?
Yep, yep. So were you going to talk to them about that? I had that in my minutes from a prior meeting that you were going to talk to Special Town Council about that, unless you don't think that's necessary.
Are you talking about the...
The Corey, invulnerable, defining what the...
The Corey or the CDL?
The CDL?
Oh, maybe it's the CDL. Give me your minutes.
Because I'll be seeing her tomorrow. I could probably ask her about it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, we were going to get pieces together that...
I thought you wanted it here. You want that the town council to have all those pieces?
No, for here, for this...
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Not for tonight?
No.
Okay.
I thought that...
For when we have continued the hearing.
The 17th.
Yeah.
And not 18th.
Yeah.
Let me know if you want me to ask her anything.
I think actually, as I had a chance to think about it, I understand the situation at this point, that we actually have like three, probably three pieces. The general personnel bylaw, the contract provisions, and the police contract, and this as a policy for CDL that all fit...
So it was specifically for CDL?
Yeah, that all fit together.
Kind of like...
And I think the original question was, was this broad enough? You know, did we have any holes in our coverage? Because we should have that to cover everybody. But as I had a chance to look at it, I think the personnel bylaw covers everybody's non-contract. This is a specific requirement of federal law dealing with the CDL license, and the police have a drug policy, as will the highway department probably as part of the union contract.
I don't know if the teachers do, but...
And when you put all of those pieces together...
I'm not sure if the teachers do, but...
Well, that's on our hunt anyway. But I think, as I say, when we were talking about it, I was losing track of the fact that we actually had multiple pieces that came to bear, so...
Okay.
Okay.
We have a letter from the Lions Club asking to get permission to hold the annual toll road in the center of town on May 13th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon.
To approve.
Rain date would be the 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You sign that?
Did you pass over the next one? It's not ready for today.
Okay, number four?
It'll be ready next week.
Okay.
This is the card even?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have local initiative program, an eligible purchaser certificate for resale of nine Alden Drive.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it, one signature, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we have...
If you wish.
For the 2017, 2018, a license for the junk dealer's license.
Were we able to run down whether there'd been any complaint that was...
I typed up four different call locations. Two, I think, were founded, and the other two not.
So we're looking at on January 12th, call of a parked truck. The truck arrived after 7:00 a.m. and was not running. May 6th, truck idling driver arrived after 7:00, was advised to shut off truck. May 16th, call of truck arriving early, fill-in driver not aware of rules, was advised. October 21st, well, it couldn't be October 21st, 2017, because that hasn't occurred yet, so we'll presume it's 16. Call of truck idling, it was unfounded. And then December 9th, call of truck blocking lot. The truck belonged to the company moving a piece of equipment from the cell tower, so no involvement when the Berlin auto...
It doesn't sound like there's any material...
No, and Anne Marie said that they have put procedures in place, so they have cameras placed at the gate and the driveway also.
Okay.
All right. So the approval would be for the junk dealer license, and...
Yeah, it's the non-automobile junk.
Okay. Junk, old metals, and second-hand articles.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any other questions on that?
No, and we have conditions on it.
Yes, we have. Seven conditions. Do you want me to read them out loud to you? Let's see. Collection and recovery of non-automotive scraps shall be conducted within the same area specified in the Class III license. Because the non-automotive salvage activities authorized by this license are understood to be incidental to the pre-existing automotive salvage activities, it shall be null and void if the Class III motor vehicle junk license lapses or is revoked. No equipment used only for the processing of non-automotive scraps shall be operated on the premise. No hazardous materials which are not normally handled in the course of processing automotive scraps shall be processed. No activity which the Board of Selectmen may in the future judge to adversely alter the character of the pre-existing automotive salvage operations shall be conducted. The licensee shall provide the selectman a list of the principles of Berlin Auto Parts. Only those hazardous materials which are incidental to motor vehicles and appliances, that's kind of second. Dirt and debris associated with vehicles entering and leaving shall be removed from the roadway in front of the premise.
Okay. When does this expire?
End of this month.
End of this month, okay.
Do we, I thought we had hours, or is that on the other license?
So they're subject to the first condition, is they're subject to all of the conditions of their Class III.
Okay.
Class III, and the Class III has the hours.
Okay.
Okay, I'd move to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does the second sign here, does that mean anything?
No, it's a date up top.
Oh, okay.
It's on the left.
Okay.
Okay, we have a request for, to put deaf child signs on, at Marlborough Road. Someone has a child who is profoundly deaf, and he would like to have signs up to notify cars. He wants two signs on Marlborough Road and a third on Dudley, give him a little extra peace of mind, as traffic often passes by in excessive speed around the bend. And it's been, any comments from...
Both, both places and highway are recommending.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
1870 Town Hall, we can do this at the end?
Yeah, we'll do that in exact session. There are just a couple last questions. Go over.
Okay. Annual Town Meeting warrant. Vote to approve the town ballot questions. So, did we get the exact ballot language?
If you look at the last article...
Is this on what you gave us, then?
It is.
Okay.
It's Article 46, page 13. And it's the second...
One and two there.
Yep, number two.
So number one says, "Shall the town be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Prop. 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued for the purpose of funding the acquisition of the fee, interest, or conservation restrictions of portions or, portions of, or the entirety of certain parcels of land in the town for the linkage of wildlife and hiking corridors." And then the second one is, "Shall the town vote to change the positions of elected treasurer and elected tax collector to a combined treasurer-collector position to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for a term up to three years, provided, however, that such change shall not take effect until it is also approved by the voters at the May 8th, 2017, annual town election, or take other action thereto."
Okay.
So there was a comment there that Town Council had put in.
I would like to say that the comment he put in, he was missing the word "special" in front of "town meeting." I looked it up on the, I looked it up on the Massachusetts law thing, where you have to have it 60 days before, you have to have a special 60 days before voting.
I was going to correct him, but it doesn't affect that.
What he's saying is, I'll read it. Nope. Well, the statute was explicitly amended to allow for such a change, which I presume is the appointed positions. It was not revised to address the result if the terms of the incumbent treasurer and incumbent tax collector are not synced.
Are they synced?
No.
Of course not.
Okay. So I think what they're saying here is, you can only do this at the expiry of...
Both positions.
Both positions' terms, elected terms.
So Dennis is up this year?
No, he was last year, right? Treasurer last year. He's supposed to be, term expires 2019.
And what's the tax collector's?
2018.
Okay.
Next person.
So next year you appoint a tax collector, or...
A treasurer.
A treasurer, rather?
I don't really know how you do it.
Well...
I think Town Council's having difficulty with the two at times.
Okay. Let's leave the warrant article as it is, because I think that whatever we have to do, we can do as a motion under the article, because it's a matter of timing.
It's a warrant.
Okay.
One more question.
Yep.
I mean, that's, because we've got to, it's showtime to get into that.
The ballot article, sit the end.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. I think, given the article that we just read...
Yes.
It seems to me that anything that we could do, you know, needed to do in terms of effective date and syncing this, et cetera, could be done as a motion under that article.
Okay.
Because the article speaks about changing the positions, you know?
Yes.
And so if we, you know, if we add in a motion, a specific time, or, you know, something like that, I think we can work that out, and I think we can go with the article...
That's given, that they gave to us.
That's given, and we will have to talk to Town Council about what we want to do in terms of working this out as a motion.
Okay.
Under it, I think.
Well, let's try to do that before town meeting.
Oh, no, it's so much more fun to do it while we're whispering up on the front.
That's what I'm worried about.
You have no sense of adventure, Ms. Buma. I think absolutely we need to sort that out beforehand.
Okay, is there anything else on the warrant that you have an issue with?
The other question was about the conservation borrowing.
Yes.
So if you go back to page seven...
Seven?
Yep. The Article 36 has two versions of it. And I didn't want to do that. I think we are talking about the second Article 36, the alternative, if parcels are not yet identified. But we didn't give Town Council directions to what we were trying to do with that, the borrow. It's not like we have targeted list of...
So number two is, if we want to just borrow the money, put it in conservation, and then they continue on with what they've been doing, which is identifying parcels, or having the ability to, if somebody's parcel comes up for sale, that they can buy it. Is that, is that what alternative number 36 does?
Sorry, who gave us this alternative?
Town Council.
Okay.
I deleted his comment, though, so let me get that.
Okay.
I was trying to think, get it ready to be signed, but then...
Okay.
No, I can't see, anyway. What was the one that he deleted but put it in as a sidebar?
That was, that was the treasurer-collector one that you had that back and forth with him about, like, where is it?
Right. Is it still...
It's, well, it's not a standalone article. It's at the end, it's Article 46.
All right. Okay, I see what this does. This provides for appropriation into the conservation fund?
It provides for...
For appropriation into the conservation fund.
So they can spend it when they want.
As opposed to expenditure, it's a direct expenditure. Yeah, that's the difference.
I would presume you'd do 36.
You mean not the alternative?
The alternative, rather, 36.
Okay.
That's what I presume they want.
Yeah, I wonder if...
I don't know that he knows one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, because I think they're still making this up as they go along, you know, and have not entirely decided. At least I haven't heard...
You're saying conservation?
Yeah, what conservation is ultimately going to do as a motion under this. I was wondering if we do an "or," you know, for the acquisition of certain property, or, and then we can make a motion under the article one way or the other. I don't know. I suppose it's unlikely they'll have their act together on a particular parcel.
No, I mean, all along, they've had money that they...
Oh, yeah, I'm aware of that, yeah.
And so this would, this would keep that...
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, then I think 36 is what we want.
Alternative 36.
Yeah.
The second one.
Yeah, the alternative 36.
Well, Mary, that wording has to go, that wording is just on the ballot, but we also need the wording to pass town meeting.
This is the...
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the treasurer-collector. You need both pieces.
I hear what you're saying, he took it out, and that's what your point was. I guess I should put it back in.
Yes, you need to put in what he put on the sidebar, "in."
That is, what I put, what was in the sidebar is in Article 46 now as the question.
So you put it back in?
No, I will put it back in.
As the question.
As the question, but it still needs to be voted on the floor.
Yes, yes.
I can't print, oh, yay. I'm just going to print now.
Well, now that I look at this, "She'll not take effect unless it is also approved by the voters of the annual town election." Is that the wording you'd have on the ballot?
It almost seems like the wording you'd have in the warrant.
Yes, not on the ballot.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. And then the question is, all right, hang on. Yeah, I would almost think, "Shall the town vote to change the positions of elected treasurer and elected tax collector to a combined treasurer-collector position to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for a term of up to three years, period?" That's the, that's the election. And then this should be...
The ballot question.
Yeah.
Where do you want...
No, no, that's, yeah, this should be the warrant.
This should be the warrant.
Yep.
And the ballot question should end...
At "provided."
Yes, yep.
Where would you want the treasurer-collector to go?
After I go home. Okay, let's figure that out.
Well, so where is the town budget? It's...
Eighteen, nine.
Oh, I got to write it for...
All right, so...
Nine.
Thirty...
Nine.
Yeah. So then we spend a lot of money, five thousand, da-da-da-da-da-da. So these are all spending articles up through 31? No, 31 it spends.
31 is the last one, and 32 is...
Why don't we put it in like...
Actually, 32 is a treasurer's...
32 and 33 are both, wait a minute, to see if the town will vote to change the position...
It's in, it's Article 33, which is just, we would have probably put it...
All right, okay, so...
You're way ahead of us, Mary.
Even though you don't know it!
Somebody's, you're even, is way ahead of us.
It's 3:00 in the morning, so...
Yeah, well, okay.
See if it's...
No, I think that's, yeah, I think that's...
The other one is the conservation. Does that need alternative language?
We said to take the alternative and take out the other.
Okay, and then does that change the question at all?
No, I don't think so, no.
No. All the question, does it say that you're going to...
Exempting from...
Prop. 2 and 1/2, yeah.
Look at that.
Since there is a ballot question for the exclusion of the debt from Proposition 2 and 1/2, this additional language should be added to the article. That's the alternative.
Both articles would need the wording for Prop. 2 and 1/2, because no matter which way you go, they're both going to be overrides.
Now, I wonder if on the, I wonder if under the ballot, we need to say "or," and then carry in the language, you know, for funding... No, probably not.
All right, so that's 33. Did we ever get an answer if we needed to accept Chapter 138 for...
Sunday hours?
Yeah.
Left alone, didn't put any comment.
Okay. Well, in either case, you'll be covered.
I am.
All right, capital planning. Alternative 36.
I'm taking out the old 36, and I'll try to go down.
Yep.
And the Seslik made it in. Moratorium on Marijuana.
Yeah, he totally changed that.
He did?
Yeah, that language that's in there is entirely revised.
Okay, but that's from him?
It is from Town Council.
Okay.
Which article is that, just like...
38.
38?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Their recommendation is to put that in the zoning bylaws.
Yep.
All right, and then 39 is Planning Board, zoning bylaw, and then we have a fire protection bylaw...
Can it just be adding a 16?
Yep, okay. And that goes in right before the other zoning bylaws. That makes sense, yep.
Mm-hmm.
This is going to be a long night.
I'm bringing a pillow.
Couple nights, I suspect.
Oh, Dunkin' Donuts is offering to bring coffee.
You see, oh...
For real.
But because they have this, yeah, right.
Tell them to throw in some donuts, or some, what are the little ones called? Munchkins.
That's funny. I hope we said no, there's no beverages allowed in that gym.
Barry said...
If they go out in the hallway.
Barry said, if the school wanted to allow it in the hallway, but he was not going to allow it inside the doors. And he was discouraged in any event, because of the gym.
Yeah.
I think, I think you got the message. I don't think he's going to do it.
Yeah.
I suggested that.
You think?
I admit it. That's a planning board meeting!
Oh, boy.
Senior residential and drive-through. The Town Management Study Committee.
Who's going to carry the ball on the, the combination of treasurer and collector and...
Dennis.
Dennis? And the fact that would be obviously compensated, added to the budget, all sorts of, yes, no?
The pros and the cons? He wrote that email with all the pros and cons in it.
I understand. But I was sitting there at the last town meeting when I thought that somebody else was carrying the ball on the acquisition of the property down on South Common, and nobody was carrying the ball. And I do not want to be sitting there in the town meeting with people, you know, their fingers in their ears, trying to figure out who's presenting this. So we put it on at his request. He has got to do...
We can go talk to him.
The preparation, if he wants us to help, we need to, you know, have that sorted out ahead of time, because that was embarrassing.
Yes.
And in the end, quite deleterious to the town's interests, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Talk to him. I have to go talk to him about health insurance.
You're going to talk to him?
Yeah. I'll go talk to him.
Okay.
When do you discuss who's going to, you know, take the ball for each of the articles?
The night.
Do you?
Well, for the ones for the selectmen, yeah, we generally...
No, literally reading the motion, yes, but...
But to carry the ball and explain.
Well, how many ways are actually...
Isn't the newest member of the Board of Selectmen who does it, yeah?
Yes, the newest member. That's right, I forgot about that.
Well, that's why I would need to do my homework, that's why.
No, we will, we will go through things. If, I mean, a lot of the stuff, you really don't need to spend too much time with. If there are departmental motions to be made, like police or fire, we just split those up, because the two chiefs not being citizens can't make the motion.
Right.
But then you, you know, yield the floor to them, and they, you know...
Highland Commons Cultural Funds, we would talk to.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the swing set. So 18. The next one's Planning Board, Council on Aging, Data Systems, Cemetery.
We might, again, we defer probably to Tom on this, but Article 21 would be one we would make. But then, as the IT coordinator, we'd ask him to speak to it, or if it's really simple and we get it together ahead of time, we can do that, but...
Article 34, you'll have to explain.
34 is...
Selling liquor on Sunday between 10:00 and 12:00 noon.
Okay.
And I don't understand that PEG account, so... And I don't understand that PEG account, so... Thomas, you've worked a little bit on that, if somebody needs to talk about it, that whole...
Which article, sorry?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty.
No, no, thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Cable access and moving money from here to there and...
Yeah, I could sort that out with cable beforehand, yep.
And I think that one of us should, it's gonna have to explain, or may have to explain, capital planning.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Sure.
And the marijuana moratorium.
Yep. Yep. I don't mind doing that, because what I really want to do on that one, hopefully, is... This is gonna be a long meeting. And to basically say, when we sort of did the numbers and all of that, there was a window of opportunity between, I believe it was April fifteenth of next year and, um... and a town meeting
Right.
next year, in which, um... we would, we could conceivably get applications. We wouldn't even, we wouldn't have acted on them yet. But we could conceivably have gotten applications that would then be grandfathered under, um, the zoning bylaw. So what this does is it, uh... it closes the, you know, the gap and ensures us that we can deal with the issue at the next town meeting. So with that said, I'm gonna hopefully say to people, let's just vote it and, you know, and not waste too much time on it, um... this year, because we're really just giving ourselves an opportunity to consider it, you know?
Yeah, it's a gap of, you know, a few weeks.
Yeah, but if, you know, I mean, somebody can slam something in the door.
Right.
What's the difference between four and five? Is that changing? Thank you. Article four and Article five.
Okay.
There's not any other changes there?
What's the difference between Article four and Article five?
Oh, okay, I think... No, no, here's, I think, um... This one is establishing the accounts.
And five makes them...
The town council had a comment that if you created a bylaw... I hope you didn't double create an Article twenty called revolving funds.
Right.
Then you can just do this, um... outside of town meeting. I think that's what he said that, um...
Is Article XX our number, or is that just...
Our bylaw.
No, I mean, is twenty, is it really twenty, or did he just put XX? Because he didn't know.
Yeah, he, well, we didn't know, and it would be twenty.
It would be twenty?
It would be twenty.
Okay.
It's after light brown soil.
Okay.
That's nineteen.
Okay. Okay, so, um... This one establishes and authorizes, and this one amends the bylaw.
Okay, that's very clear. We, I mean, we have these funds already, the dog... library video finds, assessors' maps, recreation, town hall. Do, we don't do that every year, do we?
Yes.
Oh, we do? We establish them every year?
No, no, we fund them every year.
We fund them every year, the writ is in there every year.
Vote to establish and authorize the use.
So, yeah.
I didn't...
Alright.
Yeah, I didn't think we established them every year.
Who submitted these?
Town Council.
Tim?
Well, Town Council did the second one, right, Article five?
Who submitted four?
Yes. Four is what we always have in.
Okay. And what he...
Five, he drafted.
Okay, and five, he's saying that we really should have these memorialized in a bylaw?
Yes. He's saying that there was a change in the Modernization Act that allows for action through a bylaw, but I'm just trying to print out...
So then we wouldn't have to establish them every year?
You're gonna print it out with the comments, or...
It's refusing, so we'll see if he'll do it out here in black and white.
Okay.
I didn't think you had to establish them every year, but...
No, you don't.
So it says expenditures from each revolving fund will be subject to the limitation established annually by town meeting. That's what we normally do, right? Establish the maximum amount?
Mm-hmm. Not there?
No.
Alright, well...
Can I just, is it on the screen, so I can see it?
Yep.
Can I just go over and...
Yes, you may. No cigarettes.
Okay. Not this one.
No sneaking out.
Well, it says I move to amend the general bylaws, just adding this.
But I don't even know if... This is a motion.
Right.
But should this even be in here? This looks like what, the motion that you would make on the floor, not, not be in your warrant. Like, look at thirty-seven.
Look at Article seven?
Yeah, and so that's, those first three lines are the three lines for the article. The motion is underneath it, which should not be in the warrant.
Right.
So I think that these need to be moved. The motions are under three of these, I think those three need to be taken out.
I guess...
And I think this needs to be taken out, because that's the motion too, made on the floor.
Or put it in a separate document and...
Right.
Give those to the parties that are gonna read them.
All of these have motions underneath them.
So that therefore, in the future, you know, make the...
How many of them do that? Well, all the way back to page one.
Yeah, but then it stops on page three, after seven.
Probably overlooked it. Or maybe they are just giving us that information from council.
Yeah, but it's not consistent.
Oh, it gets rid of caps.
Well, it has to be cleaned up.
Well, tonight's the night to clean it up.
Right.
Because I think all of these revolving towns have to be under a certain...
Alright, alright, yeah, we leave the two in, we'll have to talk to him about that.
Have we gotten any building inspector applications?
I don't know. I can't, I tried reading that document on Google Docs and none of the sideline comments show up. You have to get it into Word.
From the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can't do that.
Oh, no, I just copied and I put it in there, and I put it at the end, I guess he's saying we can't.
That's what it seems to say.
Because we didn't do an election sixty days prior.
No, we didn't have a town meetings.
No. Are you... Are you talking about... The treasurer?
It says that we have to have a town meeting sixty days prior to the election.
Can we, can you, can you call an election?
Yeah, we can call an election.
So we just proceed at this town meeting vote and then have the election?
Probably, we're gonna just have, we're gonna have to go up there and talk that out.
There was one other about the, um...
That is wrong, if you're talking about treasurer-collector. He left out the word "special". Go look up the wording under the law.
Okay.
What you, what, what the law says is, or you ha, you can have a special town meeting sixty days.
What's the NGL site?
It wouldn't be...
I don't think we have an updated book.
Yeah, we have, no, kept those up, right.
She can pull it up, or I can pull it up on my phone.
Okay.
I looked at that, and then I was like, that doesn't make any sense. And then I looked the law up, and he left "special" out, and I...
Alright.
I'd already made...
No, you know what? Let's, let's do it assuming that that's correct. Let's confirm with Town Council that reading, and, um...
You can pull it up. Did you pull it up?
Yes.
Yeah, it says "special" right in it. Um, I have...
The actual town meeting, taken under provisions of the section, shall take place at least sixty days prior, "special".
"Special".
Yep. I was gonna bring that up, but I'd already brought up other points. I thought, I'd just leave the guy alone.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So take it...
No, leave it, leave it. Yep.
Okay, I have some other comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Look at Article one. So it, Article one, to see if the town will fill, and then it has the motion underneath it.
Yeah.
So the motion should be taken out, because that's what we make...
No, the first, the first, um... seven or eight are moved as a, as a group on the floor, always.
Yeah, but why would we put that in a warrant?
We don't put the motion...
It's always in, because it's printed. I'll show you last year's.
Funny how you forget over one year.
Or you don't.
I mean, not that last year is indicative of anything, because I was here, but see up and, up through five? The motions are all as printed in the warrant.
That's weird. Well, this continues up through seven.
Yep.
Oh, that's because we're combining them and they would have to give individual motions to moderator, correct?
There you go.
Well, Article seven doesn't combine anything.
No, that's true.
Is that one going to be a combined vote on the floor?
No, it just says I move to authorize the payment of a salary of fifty dollars.
It used to be three hundred.
Right. But it's going to be... You're gonna, you're making the motion to combine articles, however many, through seven.
Where are you doing that?
Yeah, I think what we've done in the past, and that's why it's...
Ah, okay.
That we make those, we, you know, we move those seven motions all together.
Okay. Okay.
I got it.
Alright, well, otherwise it looks great.
Okay, yeah. Alright, so just to recap, alright? We're going to leave four and five in.
And you're gonna talk to Joel, or you understand why there's two in here?
Yes, I do, but we'll...
Okay.
We'll get a crisper explanation of it, you know, but yes.
Okay.
The main thing is, as I say, I think that, um... instead of reauthorizing the funds every year, you would just be, uh, funding them as part of the budget, do you follow me?
Yeah.
So, and that's the piece that I wanna...
Okay.
Okay, and we decided forty, forty-six...
Thirty-six. Alternative?
Conservation?
Conservation.
Thirty-six is gonna be the alternative, but I wasn't talking about forty-six, actually.
Okay.
Forty-six is thirty-three. If you, thirty-three is the, is the town meeting vote on the combination.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Just wanted to be sure that, because you were up there when we were talking about it. And then, um, forty-six, which contains the warrant articles, okay? Should the, the, uh... The election, the ballot question should end with three years at the end of the second line, and you should strike "provided".
And...
Get rid of the whole rest of it, it just ends at three years. Yeah, well, it definitely doesn't matter about the voters on the eighth, right? Because now you'd have to have an election sixty days out?
No.
No.
That's only if you have a special town meeting.
It's only for a special, yes, so, so let me, let's just...
Okay. So that one stops at three years period?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's required, okay. You know what? I think we should actually leave that in.
I think so.
Because both things have to happen.
Yeah.
But I think you should change
Okay.
the verb from "is" to "was".
Unless it was also approved by the voters?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, no, 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 hang on, hang on, hang on.
You're redundantly...
No, 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 but I think, because it has to be passed by both.
Yep.
So I think what we need to, yeah, you're right, and I think what we need to say here is, unless it was also approved by the annual town meeting...
But it says that, is also approved by the voters at the May eighth...
No, May first, May first. We're talking town meeting.
It's gotta be...
Okay, so it should say, oh, because that's gonna be, I see.
The annual, I, I think we should say, yeah, the annual town...
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Meeting.
Why didn't he fill that in then, he would know that. Annual town meeting.
Well, you know what, wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
Does it have to be the annual town meeting? Because if they pass it at the ballot and it doesn't pass a town meeting, you could call another town meeting, and if it passed at the second town meeting, would this not still be valid? I know in two and a half, you can do that.
Was it, I just checked out the law, did it say? This.
Isn't this fun?
No, it's it.
Okay. Maybe come, okay, say by a majority vote of the annual, okay? Or special town meeting. Okay?
Which is held.
Hang on. Then it says, "and acceptance by the voters at annual town elections", okay? Provided, however, that if the vote is taken at a special town meeting, that, uh, has to be at least sixty days prior to the annual election.
Okay.
Okay, so, this is gonna be at an annual town meeting. I think if we just say, um... You know what? I would say, provided that this is also accepted by an annual or special town meeting in accordance with the provisions of this chapter of the general laws. Because that way, we could do it at a future annual town meeting.
Okay.
You couldn't do it as special, because the order would be wrong, but you could do it at the subsequent annual.
Okay.
That make sense?
So you wanted to say, provided, however, that such a change shall not take effect unless it is also approved by the voters at an annual or special town meeting in accordance with master general law, Chapter forty-one, Section one B?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That way, I think we're... That way, I think we're, we're covered in both things. Okay.
And ditch all the rest of it.
A ditch, I mean, the proviso should, as I said, what you're doing is sort of a reciprocal, you know?
Or take either of them.
Yeah, because both things have to happen. Okay?
Yep.
Do that now, or do you wanna do it after? You wanna sign it now, yeah?
Yeah, well, I mean, I could sign this tonight, I could also come by after the, I'll be out and about in town tomorrow at eight-thirty for the thing, so I could come, you know, I don't think that's gonna last more than an hour, I could pop down.
Do you need to bolt tonight?
No.
Okay, I mean, I could just do it after.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Either way. Okay, so the only stuff that's being changed is you're taking out the Article thirty-six and using alternative and changing the wording on this ballot.
Yep, that's what I need to do.
Yep.
I think we're good.
All right, so, should we vote to approve the town ballot questions?
So moved.
As amended.
The town warrant and ballot, town warrant and the annual town meeting warrant and town ballot questions.
As...
As presented.
As amended.
And amend.
Okay, second?
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll wait for Mary.
Yep. Mary, you don't have to do those now. We can take care of the rest of the business, and then I don't mind hanging out.
I'm listening, I mean, the rest of the business is fairly light, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
DEP request for a board of selectmen meeting regarding Maplewood.
I will call, I will call them and see if they want to chat.
Okay.
The sergeant's negotiation request, chief had been out for a while, a little while on vacation, and I wanted to catch up with him when he got back. But he will be at, I believe he'll be at the meeting tomorrow. He's one of the invited guests for the pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
So I will catch up with him and we'll schedule something. That I don't anticipate being a long or difficult negotiation, we just have to do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Library DEP documentation.
Well, I mean, to my, to my way of thinking, we are where we are, but we, I think we need to have, you know...
We still don't have documents.
The water tested, and we need to know what the septic plan is there before we spend that twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, I agree.
And I mean, now we've told, been told sort of what we need to do, but we don't actually have an answer from them until we do it.
Right. Well, he needs to give them the total.
I'll take a look and see when the library trustees are meeting, next time, I mean, I could swing by. Okay?
Yep. All right.
All right.
Is there any other business?
Yes, I would like to go into executive session, unless anything from the floor, or...
The library trustee's meeting tomorrow.
Mm-hmm? Oh, okay, lucky me.
Oh, you gotta go to the Planning Board meeting tomorrow. That's all the zoning bylaw changes.
Do I have to?
And then Wednesday is the ZBA for Mark Rhodes Project.
Yeah, well, okay.
No, you don't have to.
Well, I may go to the ZBA. I didn't think I had to go to the Planning Board, but...
You can go to the trustees.
I'll go to the trustees, if there are meetings tomorrow, yeah. Okay?
Okay, so, go into executive session, and the reason is...
This is for the purpose of discussing a professional services contract in connection with a clerk of the works for the eighteen-seventy Town Hall project.
Okay.
And we will not be going into open session, again, returning to open session.
Okay. Boom and aye?
Second.
Whoops. On favor?
Andrew, aye.
Keith, aye.
Okey-dokey.